I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025 Middleton Select Board Meeting. It is seven, sorry, 5:10.
It just looks like 7:10.
It sure looks like it and feels like it. Welcome to winter. So I am going to take out of order on the agenda, I'm going to take first the 615 Agenda Item, which is the Executive Session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining negotiations. And this is for the Middleton Call Firefighters Association. We will be returning to open session. So I'd ask the clerk to take a roll.
Is there a motion, Mr. Chair?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second? There is a second. I would ask the chair to take a roll. Thank you.
Rick?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
And I am a yes.
Okay, we're in executive session and we'll be returning shortly. I'll call back to order the Middleton Select Board Meeting of December 2nd. I'm going to take number 12 on the agenda, which is the ratification of the Middleton Call Firefighters Association contract for a period through June 30th, 2026. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
There is a motion, is there a second? There is a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any? Okay, that is adopted. If you have not signed the contract, please do so. Thank you to both the Association and the town for reaching a successful conclusion of this contract. Okay, back to the top of the agenda, the business portion of our agenda. You have before you warrant article, warrant number 2611 and Facilities Project Number 75.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The before you warrant 2611 dated November 26, 2025. On the payroll side of things totaling in at about $922,000. You'll note some overtime for the Electric Light Department, the Fire Department, and the Police Department. Nothing for snow at the time of this, but you're probably going to see one pop up, at least for some salt that was put down around this neck of the woods, thankfully.
We'll do some more of that shortly.
Yep. For bills payable, coming in at about 1.8 million. A few things worth highlighting on there, $162,000 for the Essex Street paving and striping. For the Fire Department, you'll see about $5,000 for equipment repairs. That's just general repairs to vehicles, not one, you know, made it back into anything or anything like that. Under the Health Director, you'll see $8,300 for Public Health Excellence Grant-related expenses. A little further down, about $10,000 for bulletproof vests for the Police Department, about $250,000 for health insurance premiums for the school, and just under $200,000 for the same for the town side. And then Facilities Project, warrant FP75, a heavy hitter, coming in at 300, or excuse All construction dollars, and as you can see, they've really been moving along, especially once they got the privacy down off the fence there. A lot of site work, benches, bushes, trees, sidewalks, all of those elements. They're going to start pulling back a little bit on the outside work because it's December, obviously, so we're not going to get grass to establish or anything like that. But they will probably be doing a little more, a little more grading before the frost sets. A lot of the work and a lot of the bulk of what's being carried here is interior work. And so for folks that had an opportunity to walk through a couple of weeks ago, you can see that they've been doing a lot of millwork. It's maple everywhere, and it looks really good. They're doing a really good job getting in a lot of the fixtures, a lot of the final paint in some of the buildings. The Town Hall, Community Center is still a little bit behind the Police Station, but moving along. And we're right on pace for where we should be, and I'll have a little bit more of an update in my TA update on that, but.
And how's the cash flow?
Cash flow is also right where it should be. We're continuing to taper down, and we're projecting to be under by at minimum 4 million. So and for the folks watching at home, that's not 4 million that we have in hand that we can put towards something else, that's 4 million less that we'll be borrowing.
Borrowing.
Because that pops up from time to time, and we're still pushing to get that number higher or lower, however you look at it.
When do you think we will be at a far, final borrowing, borrowing for the final remainder portion?
Uh.
I'm not going to hold you to a date, but I'm just.
We're only doing a ban now.
Yeah.
We're banning now.
I couldn't commit to anything right now. I'd want to bounce it off Sarah sometime in the spring, but we want to kind of see where things land.
Two years to do it on the date of the ban.
The reason why I was asking is just for that reason. I would actually recommend we consider.
Pushing out.
A little bit, yeah.
Interest rates, yeah.
Yeah, rates are starting to come down again.
I know Nick Federico, our treasurer, has been keeping a close eye with the Treasures Association because they monitor it pretty indepthly. So he's got updates coming in from them about timing, too.
Okay.
So when I asked about cash flow, I meant, do we have to start borrowing to meet the obligations that we're paying?
Yeah.
Or is it still from the bond?
Not quite yet, but we're pretty close to almost there. We've been.
And those will be bans.
Yep, we'll be running those, or we've been running those calculations in-house. So I'd say sometime in the next several months, we'll be going out for that process.
So I'll move to approve warrant 2611 and Facilities Project Warrant 75.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, short. Jeff?
The $8,300 for interim planner, is that the amount that we're anticipating to pay the whole time she's working? Or what does that represent?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The $8,300 interim planner, is that the whole money we're anticipating paying her for her whole time? Or what does that $8,300 represent?
I don't have the exact contract or agreement in front of me. What was the?
I think it's only for what we've paid to date, though. We can't pay in advance.
So how long has she been? Because she's part-time, right?
Part-time for.
10 hours a week.
Yeah, October.
It can't be $8,300.
October, November, or, I believe that's October and November.
We'll go back and confirm it and just shoot you an email.
Okay, so there is a.
Yeah, because Anna went out this second week, right?
We, yeah, we had a bit of overlap for training purposes, so I would say most of October.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if any? Okay, that passes. Both in your package as well as separately in email, we have minutes from November 4th, 2025, as well as November 18th, 2025, open session and executive session.
Mr. Chair, November 18th were not distributed to you. Just November 4th.
So the 18th executive and open was on?
Were not.
They'll be on your next one, my apologies.
What came by email today?
The Call Fire contract.
No, I thought there was something else that came by email.
The contract.
The towing contract.
Okay.
Apologies.
Okay, so we have minutes for November 4th, 2025. Any questions or comments?
Move to accept.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? There is a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if any? That passes unanimously. Okay, Town Administrator, update and report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few items to note around town. I'm in the process of reworking the RFP for the Police Station sale, so we expect to have a draft of that out for review sometime in late January, which should actually align nicely with the move in March. One of the contingencies in the RFP language we had prior was something to the effect of if we find that we need more time, then we're not going to move, which is kind of tough for our prospective buyer. So at that point in time, we should know definitively that we will be able to move in the timeline we anticipate, so.
Do we think that was a hindrance?
It definitely didn't help, but I think the other items we highlighted in the last meeting in terms of, like, being contingent upon getting through permitting and other items like that that I think we can relax on a little bit were probably more of a hindrance. But that timeline should line up well. The leftover how manning soil at the transfer station, we ended up going through about a third of it. We did have it tested just for the sake of doing due diligence, and it was clean as it was believed to be. So that was a good thing. The remaining two-thirds, we're actively looking for spots on site just to get it away from the transfer station and put it to use. So if there's anywhere else we can grade out there, I was out walking it today in the rain, and we think we may have identified a corner further down in the southern corner where the rock wall ends, and there's some old oak trees down that, and that would kind of bring it up. So if we can move it, we'd like to. And thank you to Paul Goodwin for helping coordinate that.
So how much came out of there for the project?
How much did we succeed moving? About a third of that pile.
Ballpark yardage, though.
Oh, I don't know a fan. Yeah, I don't know that offhand. It ended up being far more than we estimated in-house. So it's a big pile, but we're pushing to get it moved. We have finalized the majority of the furniture package for the new buildings. There's a couple outstanding items, some guest chairs at the Public Safety Building and a couple other little things, but everything's pretty much there, under budget for that section of the budget as well. So we'll be putting that total package together and putting it out in the next couple of weeks.
What's happening with the old furniture?
We will be surplusing it in a process to be described at a later date. I have fielded several calls for moving firms earlier in the week to help shape a scope for moving, and actually, one element of that that is beneficial for that process is a lot of the furniture, unless it's a specialty item or, like, equipment for elections or anything like that, is going to stay behind in the old buildings until we do surplus it. So a lot of it's going to be moving banker boxes, the files, and things like that. So I've been working out a scope with a couple different moving companies, and we anticipate to have that lined up well in advance, about a month before the actual move date. They need a couple of weeks of lead time typically, it seems to be the average response there. So we're very much on top of that. I hosted a meeting with some of our town staff and the developer for the Vilbridge-Middleton Project, just to talk about next steps. They'll be going before the ZBA for their December meeting. Nothing is changing with the residential 40B element, but as we had discussed briefly in the last meeting, they do intend to make some small changes for the commercial piece. There's a, an anchor business that they've successfully nailed down, and a restaurant is also back on the table, so we'll be keeping an eye out on that. The Middleton Social Services Advisory Group met for the first time last week. Among things we discussed is potentially a better name, so that may change, well, you know, when it comes. But it was a good productive meeting. We met for an hour, had a lot of the major players in town that provide those type of services, and really kind of laid everything out on the table in terms of where we overlap and where the gaps might be, and what we can do to help better serve residents in Middleton that are in need. So I think that'll be a good thing that we'll do as a standing meeting monthly, and it's just nice to compare notes and maximize our efforts in that area. Collective bargaining, as referenced earlier in the meeting, is ongoing. We've made really good progress across the board there, so thank you to our partners and the various union groups. I was joined today by ATA Bresnahan Building Commissioner Fitzpatrick, Conservation Agent Kent, and DPW Director Goodwin to talk a little bit about stormwater and the processes that we have in town, so we continue to monitor that and look for potential efficiencies. So keep an eye out, we might, may have an update on that sometime in the future. Memorial Hall.
Could I ask on the stormwater?
Yes.
Is part of that starting to plan for some type of maintenance of the plethora of retention areas that are in neighborhoods that the town has easements to, and really, some of these need to be maintained? Is that part of what's being brought to that group?
We didn't talk about that today, but we have in the recent past in terms of trying to do a better job of mapping out and cataloging those type of infrastructure assets that maybe the developer put it in 30 years ago, and they can, hey, we're, you know, we're in good shape. All of a sudden, 30 years goes by and it needs to be maintained in some way. We ran into one of those two years ago where we found, you know, that pipe in the woods, and all of a sudden, you know, we figured out that, hey, maybe we're potentially on the hook for upgrading that. So that is part of the conversation, just to see what type of liabilities we might have hanging around out there.
Okay, good, thanks.
Yep. I wanted to note that Memorial Hall will be closing at 2:30 on Wednesday, December 10th. That's Wednesday next week, just to accommodate a brief holiday gathering. So that is appreciated, and we apologize for any inconvenience there. And we continue to search for an interim Library Director for the Flint Public Library, and Jackie, I don't know if you want to provide a brief update on that process.
Yes, thank you. So I'll be updating you all tonight and the trustees at their meeting next week on the Monday, the 8th. At this time, we don't have anyone that we are ready to move forward with as an interim. We've received a couple of inquiries, but no one with the requisite skills and experience to do what we need them to do. I'm still hopeful, it is still posted, and if people are interested, they can please reach out to me. We are also leaning into other types of temps that maybe not just retired library directors. With that being said, as we had talked about in your, one of your November meetings, if we were not successful with getting an interim Library Director in this timeframe, then in December, we'd start talking about the process for posting. The goal is that I'm going to be bringing the posting together. I'll review it with the trustees at their meeting on Monday, and then we're going to have our permanent Library Director posting be available the second or third week of December, likely by around the 15th, with that deadline for mid-January. What I'd ask you to consider tonight, and we'll have on your second December agenda, is if the same two members of this committee are going to serve on the screening committee and need to be reappointed, I'll be asking the trustees in advance of their meeting on Monday the same question, and then if, with the feedback of that, we have your second meeting of December to appoint that screening committee again, so that they're ready to go for when applications start coming in in early to mid-January.
That would be the 16th of December?
It would be. So that's all on track. We have other positions at the library that we're working on filling. There's certainly plenty of holiday programming to come by and enjoy, so working with our Assistant Director, Robyn Luna, to ensure that the building is well-staffed and well-supported as we continue through this transition, and preparing them for my being there quite a bit less. I'll still likely be in that building about a day a week, but it might not be a whole day. It might be over the course of many days. So if you see me, I will be on the move with my laptop, and we'll go from there, and hopefully we'll, we're going to have a very aggressive marketing campaign, and hopefully, we find someone who is the right fit.
Okay.
More to come.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Any questions on the update and report, as well as some of the update you did on the complex?
I do not.
Okay. It's graduation day. I like your sweatshirt. So Jackie and JJ. JJ, thanks for all your work on this, by the way.
Yeah, of course. Happy to do it. It's been a pleasure.
Well, we are really happy to have you do it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'm going to turn it over to you two.
Okay. So JJ put together a lovely memo in your packet outlining the program, and again, thank you to JJ for doing so much coordination. We have our graduates here, many of them with us tonight. We're super excited. There will be a little pomp, some circumstanced, but no caps and fringe tassels, unfortunately, which is really disappointing if you're me. We had a wonderful program. I also want to thank our department heads who took evenings out of their lives to join us. They worked hard to put together informative and creative presentations highlighting what their department does get to do all the time. As I have said to a lot of our department heads, there's not a lot of times we get to talk about the good work that we do in kind of a bragging sense. Most of the time, we're defending our budget or explaining a complicated process or telling people answers that they don't particularly want to hear. Never this board, but, you know, sometimes, other times. And so they've done a wonderful job, and I am so impressed with them all, and do really thank them for really committing to this. And so I'll let JJ add anything else he wants to add, but I'm really grateful to all of our participants, to our department heads who supported us. And we'll be back next year, 2026. We'll open registration August 1st. So if you missed it and you heard the good word, then keep an eye out for that registration. JJ, anything you'd like to add?
We had 18 participants throughout the Citizens Academy, so unfortunately, not everyone could join us here tonight, but everyone was so thoughtful in their questions, very attentive. Thank you to the department heads, of course. I think it was like 17 departments we covered, various boards and committees, so we got a good grasp of local government and engaging with local government. So it was an amazing experience, hopefully for all the participants as well. So thank you to the board, to the participants, to the department head, all around. Thank you to Jackie. It was an amazing experience.
So a couple of questions for the graduates. This isn't a test, but.
But it is.
Brian, yes, it is.
So I actually, a long, long time ago in a different town, I participated, when I was very young, in a Citizens Academy, or something similar. And I did the same thing up at the State House, and it actually drove an interest in me in government and actually serving in government. So my first question is, you know, some that I look out in the crowd right now participate in different boards and committees in town, or have served in some point in the town, but who, after going through the Citizens Academy, is interested in, like, serving somehow in the town? Did you learn a lot and say, I'd like to be on a board or a committee or a commission? Awesome. So continue to let that be known. This committee appoints a lot of folks. If not every May, you have the opportunity to put your name on the ballot and run for office, even against me. I would welcome it, because I think what you've probably learned here is probably what it did for me, is drove an interest in my government, my town. And what I've learned from looking out in this crowd, but also listening to Jackie talk a little bit about the Citizens Academy as it was moving through the process, is it was a really, really great group of folks that weren't there just to learn, but were also there to share and give back to the town that they're in. Whether it's a town they've been here for a long, long time, or a town that they've maybe just moved into. So my test was more just, I hope that you'll all consider serving in some regard, whether that's volunteering at the library, or serving on a board or committee, or running for office, or go see our great town clerk and become a counter at town meeting when people raise their little pink pieces of paper, or any other way you can get back to your town. We appreciate that, but we also appreciate you being part of the Citizens Academy. I don't know, any questions for us as the inaugural class?
Of 2025.
Yeah, like, what were your thoughts? Like, what did you think?
Well done.
Well done.
Both of them did a very nice job organizing it, and it ran like that, sometimes a little over.
But I would say it's because we were so interested, and we asked a ton of questions, and they were really engaged and wanting to answer our questions. I learned so, so much, and I keep telling everybody that they have to sign up.
Good. That's why I was, people watch this meeting, and not just my mother, people watch this meeting. So it's an opportunity, like, your comments are going to drive folks that are going to join our next class. If not, well, you're out visiting friends and neighbors and folks around town. Spread the word. Tell them to call Jackie. Over the next few weeks, she's going to be a little busy, but maybe after the first of the year, call Jackie.
Signed up is August.
So speaking of, Jackie, when will our next Citizens Academy be?
Next fall. We're going to do the fall. The spring's a little chaotic with the budget and town meeting, but registration will open August 1st for our September 2026 to November 2026 class. Get excited. It might be longer next year. Eight weeks is a very truncated way to learn about 17 departments, a bunch of boards and committees, and how the whole town meeting works. So we may go another night or two next year.
So what was the most interesting thing you learned that you were like, wow, I never knew that?
I was just impressed with the level of professionalism of the departments and the department heads' information that they presented. I mean, it was, it was really outstanding. And I've been, I've been a taxpayer in town for 51 years.
Thank you.
I was very enlightened as to how things go on. In fact, I think you, each department should put a little blurb on the website, a video of what they do, because I think, you know, all of us as taxpayers need to know how well the town is, operates, you know? I was very impressed.
Well said.
I was really, really impressed by Ms. Jackie of all trades over there. She knows everything.
We were impressed, too.
And JJ is, he's right behind her. Like, they, so we were in a lesson, and our department head had a question that wasn't really in their department. These two usually knew the answer.
She is a Jackie of all trades.
Yeah. I signed job interviews, it's really good. I landed that one with Andy Sheen when he hired me. It was a good one.
One thing you may not know about Jackie.
Uh-oh.
Is she serves as a mentor on the state level through Suffolk University's Masters of Public Administration Program, and she is well-known across the entire state of mentoring young professionals entering municipal government to actually become really good assistant town administrators and town administrators. And there's a lot of folks in other towns that have actually spoken to me about the work she does, so. It's a little plug for Jackie.
Telling my secrets.
Good.
I found it really helpful because I was really moved to get involved in the town, and I wasn't really sure where to start. I put my little applications in, and being able to chase Jackie now, week after week, and just really just harass her until I got onto a board was really helpful, because I know that it's very important now with recreation and the new building and moving from just being the council unaging to being inclusive. I think that was really, that really moved me, and it was great to be able to, you know, know where to track people down and ask questions and get involved. And I think by participating in that, I was able to jump in to the meeting and kind of plead my case for getting on the rec committee, and I'm really glad that I've done that. Pumpkin carving was awesome.
I just appointed you a few weeks ago.
Yeah, absolutely. It's been great. The, the whole group is great, and.
I'll also tell you, because Costa can speak to this, it's okay if you're serving more than one board, too, so, or heading your commission, so.
I'm looking at the library right now. I'm going for my master's in library sciences, so keeping my eye on the jobs fair and just.
We're keeping an eye on you, too.
No two selves.
We may be looking for an interim Library Director, but.
Eight years executive assistant experience, I don't know my resume, but Jackie is great, answer a lot of questions, and.
Awesome.
JJ did the best round of Family Feud I have ever experienced in my entire life.
You haven't played the feud until you've played Board and Committee Edition.
It was very fun.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
We got updates periodically as, as it was going, and you could sense, you know, what we were being told was how engaged and how enthusiastic folks were, and that it seemed halfway, just about halfway into it, that it looked like it was quite a success and will be, you know, it'll be something for other people that kind of, I guess, after they heard about it and whatnot, they kind of say, oh, jeez, if I don't know, and I would have, I would have gotten involved. So thank you for, you know, blazing the path there, and thank you, Jackie, thank you, JJ, for, because that was their, that was their thing. But just to hear the involvement and the enthusiasm, thank you very much.
So because this is graduation, we get to call out everybody's names. I know some of your fellow students aren't here this evening, but I'm going to call out everybody's names. For those that are in the room, I know many of you, but not all of you, but this is also, because you're on candid camera, this is also for everybody at home, because this is your graduation. So I want to thank and congratulate, are we going to hand these out now, too, while I call everybody out?
We are. JJ's going to.
Okay. Are you in alphabetical order? Because I'm going alphabetical.
You're going to go off the order in the packet list. I got you.
I hope you, I'm sure Jackie of all trades ordered it that way, so. Okay, so Abigail Parson. Abigail, thank you.
Come on down. Come grab your certificate, and JJ will pass it off to you.
Thank you.
Pamela Adams, who's not here this evening.
She's not here.
Margaret Alfonso. Come on up, Margaret.[1723.02] Come on up, Margaret.
Margaret, another recent appointee in the last year or so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Norma Andrucci. Norma?
My pleasure. Thank you. Can I volunteer on neighbors in need? Costa? And I volunteer at, for the food pantry.
And soon for the library.
I hope so.
Thank you, Norma. Richard Andrucci.
The speakers were both informative and entertaining. There's a lot of humor among the committee, I mean, the leads of the departments, so it was a great experience.
That's good to hear.
Wonderful.
Yeah, we have some characters. Diadato Aruda, not here this evening, but thank you, congratulations. Anthony Corrido. Diane Corrido. Phoebe Erickson. Judy Galery. Claudia Johnson, come on up. Congratulations, Claudia.
These guys did a fabulous job.
I believe it.
It was a wonderful experience, and I recommend it to everybody.
I believe you won the title as the longest-serving resident of the town in the group, or did Ted beat you?
Do I get a cane?
No, you just get to brag.
And Claudia, next fall, maybe we'll have a section on the trash queens.
Could do that. I'll, I'll save my yellow bags.
We'll make you the head of that department. How's that?
Oh, right. That's a promotions idea.
I didn't even know could exist.
Diane Johnson. Emily LeBlanc Perone. Is it Perone or Peroni?
Peroni.
Okay, sorry, I should know better.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
They are. Yeah.
Congratulations, Emily.
Marilyn Maoney. Rachel Nemeth, who is not here this evening. Ted Nowakowski. So Ted won the longest resident in the...
I thought it was Claudia.
It might be Claudia. Did you win that competition?
I'm sorry, what?
Were you the longest-serving resident?
I, well, I don't know, 69 I was, too.
Yeah, I think Claudia.
So you do get that cane.
We're ordering it today.
Kyle, come on up. Kyle Smith.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Kyle's another one that serves in many groups, including the building committee that has done way more work than anybody in town realizes.
Right.
And then Ellen Strobel.
She's not here.
Not here either. So, congratulations to all the graduates, those that are here and those that couldn't make it, but thank you to all the department heads, the Jackie of all trades, and JJ. And then I'd also like to recognize JJ for all the work that you did.
Thank you.
Something very impressive, where he helped teach a class he had never attended, which is much harder than teaching a class that you've taught for many years. So he did a really wonderful job, and I'm so thankful.
I appreciate it.
We would not have had it this year if JJ was not helping us.
Well, thank you, JJ.
Thank you, JJ.
I continue to hear all across Town Hall the different things that you do to help keep things chugging along there, and this is a perfect example, and then listening to what everybody in this room had to say about you this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I appreciate you.
And JJ will be opening my stand-up tour when it begins.
Jackie of all trades tour. Good. Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you so much, everyone. Congratulations.
Okay, if you really want to see how government works, it sometimes doesn't. Next on the agenda is meeting two discussion on the winter parking ban policy recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a follow-up from your last meeting, as you may recall, we brought forward several examples from other communities. Last winter here in town, we had disbanded the parking ban policy, put it on ice, and are coming back and revisiting it now that we're getting into the snow and ice season this year. So, taking the feedback that I received from the board, I also solicited feedback from the DPW Police and Fire, who are the ones who are actually gonna have to live in this policy, ones that's in place. I think we came to a pretty decent middle ground, so without reading it verbatim, the policy lists the purpose, which is for, you know, general public safety, and recovering for specific areas. So an overnight parking advisement, which would be November through March, we may change that to November 1st through April 1st, based on Chief Sampson's feedback I received this afternoon. On-street parking is discouraged between 1:00 and 6:00 on any public road in Middleton. Vehicles may be asked to move at the discretion of the Middleton Police Department. And so that comes back to, do we want to get into barring people from parking if it's clear weather and hasn't snowed in three weeks, and there's nothing coming up on the horizon, and then you have a neighbor who calls in and tattles on their neighbor for parking in the road? And it kinda helps us get out of that situation. Category two would be a winter weather emergency parking ban, which during winter weather events, the town would declare a winter weather emergency, and when that is declared, there is no on-street parking at any time, day or night, and vehicles left on the street may be ticketed or towed. Those alerts would be shared through the town website and social media, and we would declare a start and end time for enforcement. There's also a line just saying that independent of those alerts, there is an expectation that residents maintain a general awareness of what the weather is. Anybody living in New England at this time of year is, or if not, should be watching the weather pretty closely, so just asking that people use common sense and act accordingly. From an enforcement standpoint, violations of the policy could result in parking fines or being towed, and we did carve out an area for special situations, and I do have to meet with Chief Sampson and Captain Armidge to talk a little bit more about what that would look like, but effectively, it's at the discretion of the police chief that if a resident, for whatever reason, has no off-street parking accommodations, can be made on a case-by-case basis. Once again, trying to be reasonable here.
So, does this also include municipally-owned parking lots?
Yes, I think it would. So maybe we should call that out specifically.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is, I think of the lot that's right next to Panini's, that I remember last winter, there was a vehicle that was there. It seemed like full-time, including was plowed and cleared around at some point. I had a sense if folks don't have parking, I'd rather them find a place that's not on the road, but I think we should just also think a little bit about municipal lots, especially, we have a very big one that's gonna be going live in February.
Yeah. So I may just amend that, anywhere it says on-street parking to say on, or parking on-street or in municipal lots.
School lots, too, but yeah.
But, you know, if people really don't have a place to park their car that is not on the street, maybe at least one of the lots, that can be, town-owned lots, be directed to park there, so they're not on the street.
I think that could be...
With, with a timeframe.
Yeah, I think that could be part of the special situations. I don't think we have to include it in here, because what I don't want is a parking lot being full, saying, well, I don't have anywhere to park. I'd say that should fall under the special circumstances, situations where relief from, this would be granted, and the relief may be, you know, you're gonna park at, there's a municipal lot that you'll be able to park at during the snow emergency, but it must be moved by this time. Because at the same time, whether that's our new municipal complex, whether that's How Manning or Fuller Meadow, those lots still need to be cleaned and cleared as well, so. And we know what morning rush hour is like at this school. Yeah, I think that would fall under the special situations, and I would leave that to you and the chief to hash out what you think makes sense. But I think the inclusion of municipal-school parking lots is a good addition.
Should we include a copy of this in with the December tax bills? That'll be going out the end of this month?
I can...
If there isn't something already taking up that slot, because I know they...
And/or timing.
So here's what I'd say to anybody.
I usually want that well-understood.
If it's snowing out, and there's a plow or a sander that's out, don't park in the street. Let's talk about common sense here. We have a great DPW that does a fabulous job. Don't impede them. If you impede them, you're gonna be towed. You're gonna be impounded. And later in this meeting, we're gonna be talking about a new contract for towing that will be towing and pounding you. So, I don't think we need to send this out in a tax bill. I hope residents have enough wherewithal to understand, we live in New England, it snows, don't park in the street. If you have a special circumstance, we will put this on the website, reach out, and those special situations will be addressed. And, you know, and I've always said about department heads, and here's an example on, number one on this, overnight parking advisement. I hope the police department will be magnanimous and be reasonable, and if that means asking somebody to move, and if they don't, then you tow them. So, let's just support our DPW here, so our roads stay clear and safe and clean. Because that's one thing I can tell you, I used to plow for years and years and years. It was nothing better than coming back to Middleton, because the roads in Middleton were always clear and clean when the towns around us weren't there yet. So, there's a reason for that. So, I would take a motion on this amended policy as discussed with the municipal-school parking lot addition. There's a motion, is there a second? There is a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any? Thank you. Okay. Speaking of, next on the agenda is an update on the towing RFQ responses.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you may recall, we put out an RFQ back in early November with responses due today, December 2nd at noon. I don't necessarily need a determination to be made tonight, so I think maybe as an opportunity to give the board a little more time to digest these, we'll punt it to your next agenda, but I will run through what we have for now. So just as a refresher, the RFP itself is laid out basically qualifying situations in which it would be utilized. So if a vehicle owner或operator has no preference in a towing service, if police are unable to locate the owner of a vehicle to be towed, should an emergency circumstance arise, overnight parking ban is in effect, as we just discussed, or any other lawful public authority to tow. The RFQ itself laid out a series of minimum specifications, basically if, if a firm was interested in providing those services, they had to meet the seven minimum qualifications put forward, including being licensed for public authority, towing with the Mass Department of Public Utilities, maintaining a secure storage area in Middleton or an adjacent community, be open for retrieval 24 hours a day, Monday through Friday during normal business hours, have the ability to respond to a request of service within 20 minutes or within a reasonable time, as determined by a police chief, adherence to all laws and regs from the Mass Department of Public Utilities, adherence to all laws and regs by the town of Middleton, if the business is based in Middleton, and to have maintained minimum required insurance, as is laid out. So we did receive three qualifying proposals, and to break them down at a high level, there's North Reading Auto, Danvers Auto Body and Towing, and GATA Enterprises. So for North Reading Auto, they're based out of North Reading, an adjacent community, they have three vehicles, and they charge at a rate of $35 for outside storage per 24 hours, and 75 for inside. They have 25 spaces. I didn't know you guys were all gonna write it, so I'll talk slower. The, for Danvers Auto Body and Towing, based out of Danvers, they have four vehicles. Their fee is $35 per 24 hours. They have no inside option or fee. And they have 35 spaces. And GATA Enterprises is based out of Peabody. They have 16 vehicles, a pretty substantial fleet. They charge $90 per 24-hour block. Pretty substantial. And they have 30 spaces available. And so per the RFQ, you can select at least two. So if the board would like to select more, you can certainly select more. So like I said, not a decision you have to make this evening. These three came in by the noon deadline today, so they were distributed late this afternoon. So I think maybe to afford y'all an opportunity to read through their proposals, I've sent it to you via email, take a look at it. We'll get it on for your December 16th agenda, and I would like these to take effect for the new year. So I would request you make a determination at that time, and then Jackie, if you can reach out to the selected groups.
So, I would ask, is there an opportunity to ask for a best and final to allow for a $35 exterior storage?
So there are sealed proposals, but so by mass procurement, you can't go out and solicit in that way.
You can't ask for a best and final?
No. It has to be whatever they provided upfront.
Baffo's unallowed in Massachusetts procurement?
It's when it's a sealed procurement. It defeats the purpose if somebody can come in now that it's been publicly read where the others have, what their rate is, to allow someone to match. Creates an unfair situation. I'll confirm with legal counsel, but that's always been my understanding.
And, do we have any feedback from the police department about the incumbent vendor in terms of ability, satisfaction, on-time, customer service?
So, we have, one of these firms presently provides those services. I did request that should this be, or should the board accept tonight, that it be upon the final review and approval of the police chief or his designee, just because they haven't had an opportunity to go through it. So I would say, when this comes before you again on the 16th, maybe we'll have a more formal feedback provided from the police chief at that time as well.
Okay, good, thanks. Okay, more to come on the 16th. Number five on the agenda is the surplus transfer station stairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So once again, procurement-heavy agenda. So, we have, or we had stairs at the transfer station, those wood stairs that were removed and replaced recently in the past year, but the old stairs, some are better than others and may have a little life left, rather than us paying to dispose of them and taking them apart. We reached out to legal counsel to ask what the best avenue would be, to see if people wanted them, say, hey, come and take them, so long as it was equally offered to everybody in the community, as well as that the town's interests were protected from a liability perspective. We don't want someone to go attach us to their house and then, you know, fall through it and break their leg, or something like that. So, it's basically a two-part solution. One is the board would vote to declare these of no value and a surplus on a first-come, first-served basis. People would have to come load it themselves. The second piece is they would have to sign a waiver, go down to the DPW and work it out with Paul Goodwin, basically saying that we understand these are as-is, and we're, you know, we're absolving the town of any future liability issues. So there's a picture of them in your packet. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but really, we'd like to try to clear them out there, especially before the snow really starts to pile up, because they're kind of in the way.
Has anyone expressed an interest in them?
The, I wanna say in town, the baseball group did come by and request one set, and they were accommodated.
Yeah, looks like one's missing.
Yeah. Oh, you're counting them out over there.
What are they, what's the baseball group using it for?
It was, it was something about access, do they have a physical scoreboard that they have to change? Does that sound familiar? So, so putting it in front of that, so they could access it easier.
So they already took one?
One's already gone.
At what point would we...
Put on the blue for real.
On all ones.
Yeah. So much for putting it on private.
When's the point we're gonna say, if it hasn't been taken, we're disposing of it?
So, I'll talk with Paul about that, but maybe like after, if we put the word out there, and after a month, if we don't hear from anybody, then we just take them and get them out of there.
I just, I don't want them stacked up like a big pile of gravel has been for 20 years.
And then just rot on the ground, yeah, similar concerns. And to Paul's credit, he's been hounding me to go through this procurement process, so it's one, one nice gesture before I go in front of leave, I want to get this one off the plate.
Okay.
I'll move to declare the step surplus.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any? Passes unanimously.
And Mr. Chair is confirming it was surplus of no value.
Zero value.
Zero value.
Thank you.
But if anybody wants it, it's really valuable. Okay, it's that time of the year for the annual license renewal. This evening, we have alcohol license, we have no alcohol seasonal license renewals, we have common vic non-alcohol renewal, we have Class II, Class III, and we have livery license and precious metal. So, I believe we have, at least on the report that's here, there were two licenses that were contingent on inspection passage. Are they still contingent?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and we're gonna, if I could ask that when you make your motion, you vote to approve all licenses contingent on inspection passage on the off-chance, just that as things move paperwork-wise this time of year with us and inspectional services out of an abundance of caution.
So, before we move through this, can we talk about how much more responsive some of the licensees have been this year?
I think we have a pretty good first batch. I think things are going well so far. The late fees just took effect as of yesterday, and so, for your December 16th meeting, we'll have a full, like, list of not just who we're approving but outstanding. There's a couple folks who've been, like, working really hard to get across the finish line yesterday and today, so I'm not gonna be difficult on them because they are trying to get across the finish line. But when we see you in mid-December, I will have a list of people who we are having problems with.
Okay.
But generally, this is a pretty heavy list for your first list of the season. We thank all of those businesses that have been working on their processing, and I want to give a special kudos because JJ has picked this up as part of one of his duties and did a really great job and learned a lot of interesting Massachusetts general law for how to process all of these various licenses in a very short time, and I thank him for that.
Okay. So, Jackie, what is easiest? Would you like me to do this by category?
Mr. Chair, I'm happy for you to take one motion with one exception is, my recommendation would be to do one motion for alcohol common vic, and then another motion for the two classes of
Class two, class three.
Vehicles. And then a third motion for the livery and precious metals, if that's amenable to you.
That sounds like a plan. Okay, so we have a motion before us for alcohol license, common vic, non-alcohol license. I'm gonna read real quickly. It's Dave Liquors, Fast Freddy's, J&amp;J Convenience, Mercado Magia, Rich Dale, J&amp;M Convenience, Town Liquors, Tongue's Taste, Vinum Liquors, Doubletree Boston North Shore, and Summit's Place for common vicular and non-alcohol. We have Aroma Joe's, Baked and Boozy doing business as The Bread Basket, Dairy Queen, Danvers Fishing Game Club, The Dunkin' Donuts Shop, Fabio Donuts Incorporated, Dunkin' Donuts RPD Donut Incorporated, Dunkin' Donuts N-Sports LLC, Farmer Brown's, Freddy's Place, JC Pizza and Grill at Sports Center Incorporated, Alicia and Nerali Fuel doing business as US Gas, Mutt's Pizzeria, Paradise Family Golf, Richardson's Farm, Dunkin' Donut Shop, Acai Land doing business as Bagel, Best Bagels, Best Bagels, Daria's Cafe, McDonald's, Soul Bean Cafe, and Starbucks Coffee. The two that are contingent upon inspection, their names are not listed on the list.
It's everything in the common vic section below.
Oh, the ones below are contingent.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have a list of alcohol in common vic, non-alcohol. I would entice that motion.
Move to approve those licenses contingent on all inspections and payments being finalized.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, is Farmer Brown's contingent on inspection?
Not with inspectional services and fire, which is relevant to your approval of their common vic. We will also check, you know, we check that taxes are paid in full before we physically issue the license, that they're all set with the Board of Health. So, you have to have everything checked off before we issue the physical license. Paperwork-wise, payment-wise, they are ready, and this is based off the list that we received from the Inspection Services Department. So, if they're sufficient with building and fire, then they go on the list that they're all set.
Thanks. Question on contingent on inspection passage. Doubletree Boston North Shore, how close are they to inspection?
I believe that they are scheduled, but let me send a follow-up email to be sure.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have it handy. I apologize.
Okay, there is a...
We have a motion.
So, for those that need to be inspected by the end of the calendar year, if they are not inspected or have not had a positive inspection.
Then we do not issue a license.
And at that point, I would ask for an amendment to this motion, if somebody is willing to make, that in January, if inspection is not complete, that those licenses will be held until this board reapproves them.
So, I'll make that amendment.
Okay, there's a motion for an amendment. Is there a second?
Yep.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for amendment. Let's vote on the amendment first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed if any? Okay, back to the amended motion, which is these as listed, including the contingent, and if those contingent are not completed with inspection by the end of the year, the vote will need to be remade by this body. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed if any? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, next is class two license, and that is Alba Auto, Alliance Motor Group, Auto Choice of Middleton, Auto Export, Cars Helping America, Discount Auto Sales, and then RAC Automotive, and then class three, which is LD.
You forgot North Five Auto.
I couldn't see that online.
North Five.
I had North Five Auto.
Auto Sales.
Thank you for that. And then, RAC Automotive, and then in class three is LD's Automotive Incorporated. Do I hear a motion?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, and there is a recusal on that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One recusal, and that passed 4-0. Next, on the list is gas, sorry, is livery license. We have Dennis R. LLC. We have two of them, and then Dennis R. LLC Vehicle Registration. And then Precision Metals, we have Tesoro Boston.
That's one business on the livery. It's just that they, we license the business, and then each individual vehicle, livery license.
So, we don't have to take a separate vote on that?
No, it's all combined, of one's the business and one's the specific car.
So, for livery license, it's Dennis R. LLC, and then for precious metals is Tesoro Boston.
I'll make that.
There is a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed if any? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jackie and JJ, for the work on this gargantuan task, and I know more to come. Okay, next in your package is Town of Middleton Priorities and Goals for calendar year 2026 through calendar year 2028.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna go pretty high-level on these, but I'm gonna drill down on the newer additions here. So, in order, a lot of these are carryovers from most recent year, which, once again, to the credit of this board as well as our town employees, we made really tremendous and impressive progress in terms of accomplishing the goals we had laid out for the last year. On here, you'll continue to see a push to finish strong on the building project up the road, working in conjunction with the Town Building Committee, who has done an exceptional job. So, looking for coordination for a move-in and project closeout, and then planning a open-house community celebration sometime in the summer. Number two, implementing long-view planning initiatives with the Planning Board, so we had kicked some of those off, comprehensive rezoning that's gonna complete, reach completion this May, looking at the Northern Corridor Study, Middleton Square Study, and some of those elements that Anna has helped kick off. She's done a great job there. Continuing with townwide fee studies, just to make sure that those are up-to-date and competitive. We don't want to let them sit for three or four years and then do a big catch-up. We want to try to do that, get in the practice of doing that incrementally. Number four, making IT pushes with the Regional IT Collaborative or North Shore IT Collaborative, connecting to the regional fiber network and delivering the IT system for the new Town Hall Buildings and Public Safety Buildings, which Jackie has done a good job working on that with them. Number five, increasing recruitment strategies for volunteers and committees. As mentioned earlier in this meeting, if anybody wants to get involved, please do reach out to us, and we do have vacancies, and we have a lot of folks that wear many hats, some because they enjoy the pain and punishment, others because of a sense of duty, because we're hoping some more people will step up. So, please do reach out. Number six, continuing to work on surplus properties. We're still pushing with the police station. We have some irons in the fire relative to engineering for the fire department, which is probably the next easiest one on that list. And then, of course, Memorial Hall, talking about potential affordable housing there, and then taking a look at the soon-to-be vacant senior center, Old Town Hall Building on Maple Street, and look at either options for a private entity to redevelop it or to just sell it outright, but it doesn't seem like there's much of an appetite to keep it in the town's possession. Number seven, townwide traffic concerns and development. That one's a little bit on the back burner. We made some really good pushes there and invested a lot of time and effort in lining up a redevelopment of the square to coincide with the Vilbridge project, but obviously, that's tied up in the courts. But we'll keep pushing there. Number eight, renewing the focus on employee engagement, satisfaction, appreciation, which is something that's ongoing, and then we also underscore there. When able to, and especially in this upcoming year, which is going to be a difficult year from a budget perspective, but trying to increase that contribution to get the healthcare split to 70-30 when able. Number nine, overall communication strategy. So, continuing pre-town meeting, increasing public and internal communication with boards and committees, and then continuing department head updates on a regular basis. I think that provides a good peek behind the curtain that sometimes exists for folks, and I think honestly, the Citizens Academy was a good effort towards that as well, just helping people better understand the day-to-day in terms of what we do and how their tax dollars, they don't just go into the void. They're actively being put to work every day. So, long-term planning, we talked a little bit about this. Mr. Kress, I think you actually proposed it the last time we did goal setting, and I'd like to pick your brain a little bit more about it, but trying to map out long-term plans beyond these goals, which are good in three-year snippets, but trying to look at a larger, more zoomed-out, big-picture view of where we want to be in five years, 10 years. Some of that comes from the master planning process a little bit. It's informed by that, and we're gonna be kicking that off. But maybe if the board could give some thought to that, and we can have maybe some type of visioning session or something like that sometime over the upcoming year. The Middleton 300th Anniversary Celebration, I think we'll probably put a push out. We did get funding for that at the most recent annual town meeting as some starter money, but put a push out again to try to get more people to volunteer. I think it was a small crop of people that had expressed interest, and I think honestly, as we get closer, the interest will probably increase a little bit more.
100%.
We'll push on that. So, the two new ones that I added here, and I'd appreciate the board's feedback, development in housing with a period of performance from fiscal year '26 through '29. So, for action items for this year, ensuring that large-scale developments such as Vilbridge or 35 Village Road or anything really that comes down the line here are properly vetted through a vigorous public process to ensure Middleton both meets its legal obligations while simultaneously defending and advocating for the best interests of the people of Middleton, which is a tough line to walk. Fiscal '26, to hold public conversations relative to 40B developments, our obligations as well as parallel opportunities relative to housing stock and reaching the 10% SHI, safe harbor to better control and shape and where appropriate, limit future large-scale development in Middleton. And I think even the conversation surrounding that has shifted drastically since the summer when the 35 Village Road project came along, because I think for a long time, that 10% was so out of reach, it was kind of silly to even talk about. But with that 40B project knocking on the door, it's within striking distance, and I think we have an obligation to have a serious conversation about that.
So, I, what I would add to this on number 12 is, I mean, the 10% SHI is such an artificial target, because that just holds off any future 40Bs. If these two facilities are built, we are not doing a heck of a lot to actually increase affordability in the town, in options for individuals to both age in place or remain in time in town as they, you know, graduate school and so forth. So, I would, I would like to see us put in here, at least around the public conversation, more than just the 10% SHI is really about. Jackie, you'll like this. What do I always say?
Where'd you?
Big A.
Big A, little A.
Where'd you learn that from?
So, I think this is an opportunity to talk more than just, obviously, the 10% SHI is where we want to get as a town for, so we're not dealing with these massive 40Bs that are being dropped on our heads. But secondarily, the bigger issue, which is causing 40Bs to be dropped on our heads, is there is little to no affordability in the town for the merit of folks that either live here or want to live here.
Can I just add something to that SHI 10% number? So, even if both of these projects do reach our goal of the 10%, that 10% because they're here does not mean that we're gonna stay at 10% forever. There is a mathematical equation that is done by the DHCD that tells us when we're dipping down. In other words, our valuation of the town, how many residential properties, there's a lot of components that go into that math. At the end of the day, we could be at 10% when these projects are over, and in, say, two, three, four years, if we get a large subdivision, we can be back down to 8%. We could be back down to 7%.
Or the legislature in their magnanimity could move the goalpost.
Right, because 10% shouldn't work across 351 communities in the state. We're not, we're not all in the same box.
Right, I agree.
You know, Middleton is a little suburb town, and then you have...
I would say for the, this is probably for the short-to-medium-term plan, you know, 10% is the target. That's the target.
That's their target, yeah.
And that's the target we're all living under now, but
100%.
I think it should be two targets, 10% and then opportunities for affordability.
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, we'll see what's happening. I mean, I know there's a small number of ADU applications that have been submitted and approved, and projects that are starting to move forward. I mean, we'll see what time we'll play with that.
And relative to your concern, Debbie, I think maybe looking at an inclusionary zoning bylaw, having some type of community conversation about that, so that if somebody's building a development of five or more, that at least 10%, right? So, if you're putting in a 10-unit subdivision, then at least two of those have to be affordable.
Affordable.
And that way, you're not backsliding out of that number. Something worth looking at, so.
I mean, we keep saying, you know, there's not a lot of big developments left to happen in town, but the reality is, there's still a lot of big developments that could happen in town.
It's a lot of land.
There's, there's a lot of land that can be built on.
We can't just assume some of that land will never get built.
That's right.
Okay, so I'll add that feedback. Thank you. And then, I added 13 budgetary, and, you know, obviously, the financials are a big part of what we do every year. I think the next, what we're looking at over the next three-year span is going to be challenging, extraordinarily challenging. And just looking at factors, not only within our own borders but outside of them, you know, global factors that are outside of our control, you know, factors on the federal level that impact funding on the state level, you know, looking at some of the school formula shifts and things like that. It's gonna be really tight, and we're gonna have to navigate a really narrow window to pull this thing off. I'm not nervous about it. I'm very confident in who we have at this table and on the Finance Committee, as well as on our team from a staff perspective. If there's any group of people that we could pull it off with, we have them. But I think we need to try to treat the next three years with a level of seriousness, even more so than we typically do when it comes to the financials. And so, closing out our open collective bargaining agreements, building out a transitional zero-based budget for fiscal '27 that will absorb operational fluctuations, so we try to project out as much as we can moving from the current buildings into the new facilities, but some of it, we're just not going to know until we're in there. So, trying to build something that's flexible and nimble. Fiscal '27, continuing with our commitment to hold back on any operating budget overrides and delivering a balanced fiscal '28 budget, and we'll continue analysis relative to organizational needs. And then, fiscal '28, continuing with that commitment, but I think more realistically, taking a look at what an override would look like in fiscal '30, depending, you know, where the numbers land as we, as we move down the road. Looking at the override last year, we had made the commitment that Um, looking at the override last year, we had made the commitment that we're gonna hold off as long as we can, and I stand by that, um, but it's gonna be tricky. It'll really be tricky.
100% will be.
They make difficult decisions.
Yep. Um, so that, that sums it up. Um, also, and I should mention, I got some good feedback, um, that I, I may wanna build out some area in here relative to infrastructure, a little bit we talked about earlier, stormwater, Superintend Goodwood made some good points about progress we're making with some of the, the bridges and other things, and I may, I might just tack that on to the section talking about, um, Route 114 and 62, but maybe just a broad look at our infrastructure, because that's something that is a little bit of a, a powder keg if you leave it, um, unattended regularly.
And at some point, you know, we need to complete the projects that have been funded by previous town meetings that are still open.
Okay, closing out capital.
Yeah, we probably, I, I would say on that capital piece, it would be helpful going into the budget session to understand, like, calendar aware of some of those items. And it's okay if the answer is it's not gonna be this year. Just be helpful, but have some line of sight to that.
Okay.
Okay, do you need a, um, do you need a vote on this?
Uh, with those amendments, if you'd vote to accept them, and then we'll distribute a clean version.
Uh, any comments before we go to a vote? If not, I'd take a motion.
Make a motion to accept the amendments for, uh, calendar year '26 through calendar year '28 goals.
Okay, there is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed if any?
Uh, nay.
Sorry, what?
Nay.
Nay, okay. That's a 4-1. Okay, um, next on the agenda is public comment. We still have some public in the room. Does anybody have a burning desire to provide some comment on things that maybe aren't on our agenda? Okay, okay. Hearing none, we'll move to number nine on the agenda. Um, this evening we will be ratifying a contract for the acting town administrator. Um, Jackie, Jackie of all trades, Brezner. So, um, Jackie, this will not be your first time sitting in the seat, although last time you were sitting in the seat, the other seat was actually truly vacant. This time it will not be vacant, but you'll still be running the show. So we have before us, um, a contract which does not look much different than the last time we went through this, I believe. Um, so I would ask Jackie if you have any questions on this?
Um, I have no questions, just thank you to, uh, Justin and the board for your confidence and faith in me, and for your support for this brief period of time.
No better person for the job.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, just for those at home, um, Jackie will be acting as our acting town administrator, not interim, but acting for a period of time, um, during, um, Justin's leave, which is exciting.
Parental leave.
Parental leave. Cat's out of the bag.
Specify.
We are excited for you and your family.
Thank you.
And parental leave means leave, so, um, we are in good hands. But I will also say to the four other members of this board, Jackie has a lot of hats and a lot of balls in the air right now. Her full-time job, her rather full-time job across the street at the library, that we are looking to find an interim, a facilities project that is moving very rapidly to the buttoning up phase, um, and then stepping as acting town administrator. So, um, Jackie, use us, you have five members of the board that can lean in, um, to assist. And if that means, um, asking us to do things,
We do it.
It's fully within your power.
So covering library programs, something you're interested in?
Fully within your power.
Great, thank you.
Um, you've learned very well how to do that over the library.
Notice you said ask, you didn't say do.
Don't be, we, we, if need to be voluntold, we will do so.
Thank you.
But also, um, take a breath when needed, and tell us, like, throw the flag if, if needed as well. So
Thank you for that.
I know this will not be a very extended period of time, however, um, I know this is also at a time when you were looking to take a breath. And, uh, so we appreciate you stepping up and doing this. So if there aren't any questions on the contract?
I'll move to approve the contract for Jackie Brasnahan as acting town administrator for a four-week period.
I'll second that. Okay, and that will begin upon the period that the position needs to be filled. Okay, um, there is a motion and a second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed if any? Sounds unanimous to me. Thank you, Jackie, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Justin.
Thank you.
Last on the agenda is updates and announcements, anything for the board?
Yes, on Thursday at 11 o'clock at the library, uh, will be Senator Tar's annual toy drive. It will benefit, you know, neighbors in need in Middleton. On Saturday at 3:30 at the library is the beginning of the winter festival with Santa Claus, the showing of the Grinch, and then moving over to, uh, Middleton Green for various activities, including the lighting of the Christmas tree. And on next Wednesday, Masco is continuing its, uh, conversations with municipal officials on its FY '27 budget.
Thank you. Anybody else?
On the 13th of December, uh, Wreaths Across America will be held at Oakdale Cemetery. Um, I believe noon, did you find it? It is at noon, um, so please join our, uh, VSO, our Patriotic Observances Committee, and our, uh, American Legion in Wreaths Across America.
And I assume they're still looking for volunteers?
They are very happy to welcome any and all volunteers, no experience, laying wreaths required.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a beautiful event.
It is.
They do great.
I have 40 people coming to my house that day, but I'm gonna try to get there.
If not, we can all go to Debbie's house and make it 44.
Oh, sure, plenty of food.
Okay, um, hearing nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'll move.
Make that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.